Good evening Mayor Radus, Common Council, Members of City Hall, and Citizens of Summit. Thank you for allowing me to once again speak this evening about Autism Awareness Month. Many of our local businesses and organizations, including City Hall, will once again support Autism Awareness Month this April. I encourage all businesses, organizations, and citizens in helping me make our community and the world kinder, inclusive, and more accepting of differences. If you're interested in shining a light on this complex and often misunderstood neurological disorder, to contact me via Sweet Nothings at 908-522-0888, or emailing sweetnothingsnj@gmail.com. They're easy, yet effective ways to show you care. Also, I am planning the Second Annual Artificially Aabled Art Show featuring works by individuals affected by autism. Stay tuned for the details coming soon. Once again, many thanks to all of you for opening your hearts to Autism Awareness Month. Thank you.
So if I may, I'd like to ask Chief Wrecker to just talk a few minutes about the PD Cares Program that we have in Summit.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank Zach. Seventy years ago, when I became chief, Zach reached out to us. At that time, he was probably this high, and now he's almost as tall as me, and he still is a driving force behind it. And like I told him that first day I met him, and same as today, Zach, police departments always standing behind because we wear blue every day. So we're behind you every day. So Summit PD Cares, which stands for Community Policing Awareness Response and Engagement with Special Needs Community, came together after some parents' residents came to talk with us, and Detective Matt Tarantino really ran with it, and partnered with Scott Ruff from our dispatch center, the Mountain Valley Emergency Communication Center, on how we could better serve because there are a lot of issues with, whether it's Alzheimer's, dementia, autism, about uniforms and complying with commands and things like that. So Matt put this together. I invite you to go to our website, and you can read more about it and what you can do to be part of that. All right, thanks. And then another thing that we did is we sent every officer went to specialized training. And just a quick story is there's things to look for. So we had an officer, Officer Pierre was at the train station, there was a gentleman that wasn't complying, might have been some issues thinking, you know, was he under a substance, intoxicated, or have you? And Jeff had gone through the training, and as he went through it, he started recognizing some of the behavior that he was taught in the class, and he changed his whole approach to the situation. And it turned out that the young man was from New Providence, and the family came, and it was, I think, a very successful, and I think a lot of it had to do with the training all of our officers received and continue to receive. But a lot of that, again, goes to Zach, you know, being a force, and the mayor and common council, Detective Tarantino. So I urge you to look at this. If you have any questions, call me or email me. Everything's on the website, but it's, I have a little sticker on my desk, teamwork makes the dream work. So that's what we need to do, and we continue to do here in Summit, and Summit PD Cares is just another example of that teamwork.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Zach, before you leave, could you give your comments so it can be put into the official records?
Sorry, I have to take a little bit of a break.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you do.
Do I have my name on it right there? You got it. I can check it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, moving on to presentations, this evening, we have the presentation of the municipal operating budget. So with that, Michael Rogers, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. There you go. Better? Okay. So, welcome. This is our 2018 proposed municipal budget. I will try my best to go through this in timely matter. So just to kind of give you an overview, this process started back in August of 2017, and our department heads had started working on their operating and capital budgets. And it started the process not only from a financial standpoint, but also through goal setting and looking at our general municipal objectives and what we want to accomplish. So this ran its course, they were submitted to myself and CFO back in October. We started to engage our respective committees, each department head, and back in December, December 13th to be exact, we gave an overview of our preliminary capital budget, which at the time was about 8.5 million, but it has changed since. And then back, then at the start of the year, the new finance committee formed, and each of the department heads came in, presented their operating and capital budgets, and we worked through that, changes were made, and ultimately, we are here, March 20th, 2018. And if all goes well, we'll, 28 days later, at the April 17th meeting, we'll have the public hearing, and it will be the first time the council could adopt the budget. So, as I said, department heads create their goals, and we have some overarching goals, which I'll show eight of them tonight, and I'm just going to briefly go through this. There are some key actions I've included on each slide. There's a more extensive municipal goal section of our budget report, which will be on the website, likely by tomorrow, and it's more in-depth, provides more goals pertaining to each sort of overarching goal of the municipality, and you can get a better insight into what was created by our department heads. So again, just very briefly, our goal, at least my goal, and certainly CFO's goal, was to provide a stable municipal rate this year, which I'll hold in suspense, maybe, maybe not. But a little unknown fact with our AAA rating, we still have our AAA rating, AAA, but I don't know if anybody knows this, we are the only municipality in the state of New Jersey that has a AAA rating from all three credit rating agencies, and that's a fantastic achievement. There are some counties that have that, but we are the only municipality that has that. And then we're internally, going back to last year, we, the council appointed a qualified purchasing agent, and now we've been going through revamping our processes and changing more formal, revising our formal purchasing management. That does exist, but needs to be updated. Looking at technology and how we can increase our customer service, SDL has been a big topic in the building zoning area, and we're going to continue to try to roll out some new features this year that are available with that platform for processing applications and permits. Our license plate technology that exists, we're using it in parking, we're going to be, we're going to start using it in our public safety and police enforcement. And so, and then obviously down to transfer station, you may have noticed over the last few Saturdays, we've had our parking attendants down there, and we're trying to register those who have not registered for their permit, and that's how we'll be able to facilitate that service. And then body worn cameras, we're going to be rolling out. It has started, but I think in full force, in effect, over the coming month or so. Critical city assets and our infrastructure, certainly, we started this last year with the community center, we're looking to finish this by the end of the year. We're probably halfway through a little bit more in creating a plan for our new firehouse facility, and we'll be dealing with that this year, and hopefully, we can have a strategy and a plan to, and a location, really, most importantly, to move ahead with that. And then, we've been talking about the free market. We've finally amended our agreement with the county last year, and I think this year, we're going to be, maybe soon as next month, presenting something to the council with, finally bringing this to fruition with the free market building, a freestanding building at the transfer station. Smart planning, we saw this happen, play out last night, it was a great community event in gathering a lot of ideas and thoughts about what we'd love to see in our community in that particular area. Affordable housing, just happens to be on the agenda tonight, and what we can do to promote that throughout the city. And our last approach is really more of a, we, I think we've been engaging in this already as a smart city strategic framework. I think a lot of what we've tried to implement, from public safety to parking, and in other areas in our municipal service delivery, I think there are other things that we can do to implement outside of this building, to better prepare us for what we see the next five to 10 years in the technology that there is, and you hear a lot about the Internet of Things, and I think communities are going to play a large role in making that happen. I think Summit needs to start to build out a better plan and what we could do to be successful and to certainly be more desirable, not only from a community standpoint, but also from an economic standpoint. And then our communications, we're always constantly looking at how we can better communicate with our citizens. And so there's, you know, a number of key actions here that we've certainly driven, whether it's technology through our website, social media, our people and our workforce, and how we can develop them to be better workers, and we have a great staff, I think we could always improve, and I think that's what we're trying to do through our efforts through administration, working with my assistant in developing a better human resource, centralized human resource approach. And that's started, we're going to be implementing that hopefully throughout the year, so this is some of the stuff that I'm referencing here, and also through some of the existing technology that we have to better train our employees using that. And then this is just, again, trying to improve our, you know, there's always constant challenges, that's public service, we're always dealing with, how we can better deal with the challenges that exist in our community, and I think some of this speaks to that.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
And then our last one, it's just customer service and how we can, what we do throughout the year and to develop training programs with our employees in that particular area, and I think we've done that a pretty good job. I know our department heads are constantly meeting with their managers on a weekly basis and also just looking at different ways that we can, you know, better train our employees in the customer service area. So, now we're to the budget, and we're just going to give you an overview. The purpose is to give you an overview. There is a document that looks exactly like this that will be posted on the website. It's a far more extensive document. If you want detail and you want to get into minutia and eventually fall asleep, you read this document, and it will provide you everything you need to, hopefully, it's, to me, I look at it as an education tool, and hopefully, I think citizens will be pleased with what was created. So this is our, I'm just giving you a financial summary. This is our, what I refer to as a general fund, current fund, you'll hear that term interchangeably. But you'll see that it is up slightly, and I'll take you through a little bit why, and the operating budget was up a little bit, mainly to a couple of different revenue sources, and then certainly on the expenditure side. Capital budget, we worked really hard. Last couple of years, I've been really focused on debt management, and capital budget is what drives our municipal debt. And this year, we started out, I think our preliminary budget was about 8.5 million, and I think overall was, well, you'll see, it's about 5 million, and in the general fund, it's under 4, and we were shooting for that $4 million mark, and we achieved that. And these are our two utilities. And again, you'll see the big significant drop down in our capital budget, but I think holding our expenses in the operating area. And this is the sum total of that, and the difference, and it's 0.03 percent. So I think we've, we achieved what we're looking to do this year for the total budget. So here are just a few summary points. Most importantly, our municipal tax rate is flat this year. So that was what we strove, considering sizable new revenue source that we were able to get, we actually received last year, and is now being anticipated in this year's budget. Certainly, at the federal level and all the tax reform, we felt it was particular, particularly important to provide a stable budget this year, and we achieved that. Our fund balance, even though it's down 200,000, I think that's a good thing. We had, municipality a few years ago was anticipating about 7.6, and when I started in '15, I wanted to make an effort to kind of get back to a norm, what the municipality had been using around about 6.3, 6.5 million. So I'm trying, so we finally able to, we brought it down about 500,000 last year, bringing it down 200,000 more this year, so that's a good thing, even though it's, you have to find that revenue, or that, you know, on the appropriation side, you've got to find a reduction. So we were able to manage a reduction in our surplus needs and provide a flat budget, or a flat rate. Local revenues, significant reason why that is up as high as it is, is the, with our settlement with the Overlook, with Overlook Medical Center last year, that's nearly an $800,000 revenue source that we are showing there, and that's why that's up so high. Our levy is up, about 242,000. Sowering wages is flat. In the general fund, it is flat this year. And our reserve for uncollected taxes is up, and that really serves two purposes. One, certainly is a hedge against any potential collection issues, which is really not an issue in Summit, but we do, the budget has been structured for many, many years to anticipate a very low rate, but our collection rate is at 99.65 percent. Our collection rate, what we anticipate that generates over $5 million is about 96.1 percent. So this, we're able to reduce, I'm sorry, increase that amount this year, and that ultimately helps, not only as a hedge, but also it will lapse into our fund balance if we don't use it, and that helps build surplus in our fund balance. So our tax base, which is critical, we, many municipalities don't see growth that we see, and this particular year, even with our Celgene settlement last year, and more or less how that's going to play out for the next three years, reducing it by roughly $19 million, we're at a net $25 million gain. And what that results in is about $1.1 million in new tax revenue total, like through all entities, our share for the municipality is about 211,000. And that had a decrease effect on our rate by 0.8 percent. A tax point, one cent of the tax, the tax rate is about $313,000. And here's just to show you the estimated numbers, the rates here, ours is flat, as you can see. We estimate it for the school district and the county 2 percent. I know the school district is probably going to come in 1.34 or something like that, which will be a better result for the tax rate and ultimately tax revenues, or property taxes that people have to pay. And the library rate is down slightly. And then just shows you the estimate, what the point of this is, for every tax dollar that you pay, 19 cents goes towards municipal services for every tax dollar, and that's what this is really meant for, for illustration purposes. Majority of it's school district, which is typical. And then this just gives you a comparison of what, the average residential assessed valuation, which is about $413,000, that's assessed, it's about 961 in market value. It's just giving you, again, an estimated comparison of what it will look like, I mean, a tax bill for this average property tax bill. It will be lower, just because I know the school district will be a little bit lower. And just to look at a five-year comparison for our municipal tax rate, we're averaging about 0.34 percent over the last five years, which is fantastic. We were even negative four, five years ago, and now showing a flat rate. It was up a little bit last year, now we're at 0 percent. This is just showing all four entities and their tax rate changes over the five-year period. Blue is the county, red, school district, green is the municipality, and the library is the purple, the last one. So if you're looking from left to right, and as you can see, ours is 0 percent, you don't see a bar, it's good. This one is the effective tax rate, and what's important about this, not only that we are the lowest, we have the lowest effective tax rate in the county, and what that means is, if you take your, so we looked at our, every municipality gets a ratio, and that is the equalization ratio. And so, in an ideal world, everybody should be at 100 percent, which is, there's no ideal world. Nobody's at 100 percent. And so we have all, we are at 42.96 percent this year. So by taking that 42.96 percent and 2017's total tax rate for all these municipalities, this is how it looks, and we have the lowest effective tax rate in the county. So getting into revenues, this is a summary of our revenue sources, and the categories to the left there, the percentages next to it are the percentage of the overall revenue number, which is 51,373,916. Biggest revenue source is our tax levy, it's at roughly 52 percent. And next is our fund balance number. And you can see some of the changes to the right. There's a little more extensive overview of all of the increases, decreases in the budget report, it just highlights from local revenue category, obviously, the Overlook Community Support revenue source is the big one, and then some of the other increases are interest on investments. We've got a lot of cash that's, you know, fortunate from the end of the year, and that we anticipate, unfortunately, we can't anticipate any more than what we collected last year, but still, we had a good year last year, and that's just a function of interest rates and what we're earning on our money, which isn't a whole lot, but it's still higher than it's been over the last several years. And then in the municipal court area, we've been doing much better. We were trending downward for many years, and we finally started to go back, and I think that's just, you know, enforcement and our focus on that for the last year. And then on the enterprise funds contributions, so that $885,000, that plays in large to why this overall number has increased by a million and three from last year. What that is, is all of the contributions, all the donations for the community center is essentially, we're taking it from that fund, and we have to show it as a revenue, but on the appropriation side, to pay off debt, that's what you see. So it works on both sides. So that's a big portion of this $1.3 million increase is this number, this $885,000, which is the donations that we're taking in. We have to show it on the revenue side, and then we have to show it on the appropriation side. And it's a one-time number, one, you know, for this year. And then some of which is for our debt paydown of 375, and then just showing some of the decreases, we're not taking as much in as a revenue source from our utilities this year, contributions. And then this just shows the tax levies for each of the entities, and what we're estimating, and then ultimately what ours is. So, there's a formula for this, for the property tax levy, and it's, there's a number of exclusions. I highlight this in the budget report. But we would be allowed to go up to 27,505,375, 501,375. We're at 26,456,806. And so that's what that million dollar number is, and that is essentially what will go into our cap bank for next year, and we have about, going into next year's budget, about 2.44 million. That's not real money, that's just our, if there was an emergency and we needed to raise that much more than what our normal cap year would be, that's what it would allow for. So on to appropriations. Again, same number, provided by law, we have to provide a balanced budget, and these are your three main categories of the, on the appropriation side, municipal operations, other appropriations, and our reserve for uncollected taxes. Just gives you what's, what that make, what it really comprises in under municipal operations, other appropriations, and then our reserve. And I'll get into a little more detail in the next few slides. So under municipal operations, this again, percentages just are provided, what of the total amount, public safety being the largest area, sorry, Chief, it's one of those. But, and then it's just showing the dollar change year over year from last year's budget. And then other appropriations, which is, you know, your debt service, capital improvements, deferred charges, and then the reserve for uncollected taxes. And this, this number is always a fairly large number, at least in Summit, it's pretty extensive, and I think, March, the total number that we're carrying to next year, 5 million, 6 million, I mean, and again, that would be if there was a catastrophic event. That's why we've introduced our appropriations cap the last meeting, this is what it's for. It just in, again, if there was a major event like Sandy and you lost all your facilities and you needed to raise it, it allows you to raise money, not exceeding a cap, based on what the, what this formula provides for. Getting into, this kind of just gives you an overview with the changes in our municipal personnel, and simply because of our shared court that was created at the end of last year, we are down three full-time employees, and that's the only change from '17. Sowering wages, so part of a department budget, your souring wages, and then you have other expenses, I'm just going to quickly address the souring wages. As you can see, in the, with just the general fund, it's flat from last year. Little bit up, I think the parking, I just want to explain, the parking, it's a little bit off, and there's three reasons why. One, there was some amounts that we did not include for ambassadors last year, and for whatever reason, it was an oversight. We got through the budget okay, because we had other monies that were there to provide for paying our ambassadors, and we were okay. But we put that amount in this year, so that's, that's about $52,000, is why it's greater this year. And then there's temporary staff, we're using temporary staff down at the transfer station, we're trying to register our residents for using, you know, getting their parking permits. They're busy, there's a lot of people out there, still have not done it, so it's, they're down there on Saturdays at the transfer station, signing people up, so we're doing that. And we also have our, the parking service has money budgeted for using auxiliary officers, we're working with the police department for parking enforcement and to use them at their outside contracting rates, so that there's monies in that budget for that purpose. And then our, even though UCC is a trust, it's a dedicated trust, it's outside of the operating budget, we show this because they're included in the personnel number, and we wanted to show all of what is our salary and wages for the entire organization. all of what is our salary and wages for the entire organization. This just gives you a little different view, looking more at healthcare and pension benefits. So just looking at the general fund, it is, actually, no, this is all of our full-time employees that have healthcare benefits and are eligible for pension. And it's just giving you what, really, the average cost in the benefit area to each employee, and just kind of showing there, and I think in the report, it shows three years, but this is our average cost of benefits for per employee. Getting to the other expenses portion of our department services, they're about 20% of the entire total appropriation number, up about 3.6%. And it just gives you a few of the largest increases, or three largest line items, and slight increases, and some that are down. And then on our professional side, just what we're looking at is a proposed increase in general labor, and actually, no proposed increase in that. Matt, you're good this year. And the tax appeal litigation decrease, planning, just given what we've set forth in the planning area for redevelopment purposes, that's what that increase is attributed to. Healthcare insurance, here's our gross number, and breaking out medical and dental. Then there's the net number of 2.65%, and that's just because of backing out the employee contributions. And then there's the 390,000, which is a little bit hard to see, but that's the estimated annual cost savings from employee opt-outs. So there's, I think there's about 16 employees that don't take health benefits. And that's the savings that we, to our budget. And then the three other large cost drivers in the budget, which pension, reserve for uncollected taxes, and debt service. And pension obligations is probably the largest increase in the budget this year, at 184,000. And it's pretty much on trend, what it's been increasing over the last, probably since And then, as I explained earlier, with the reserve for uncollected taxes, what our collection rate was last year, and what we're anticipating this year, which is typically how some has handled their budgets. And then our debt service. And it would have been down slightly, but for this $885,000 principal amount we're paying off for the community service donations. Next year, right now, our scheduled debt service is projected to be down about 800,000. So that's where we are. So this is our debt position as of December 31, 2017. Our net debt is 55,549. That's up from 47 million, I think it was 47,700 last year. Yep. And so that's increased our net debt to valuation, our equalized valuation, which is .76% this year. It was about .66% last year. So that's been sort of a little bit of a concern that we've been discussing over the last couple of years about our debt, which is driven by our capital projects. So that's why it was particularly important this year to really try to minimize and do absolute needs in our capital budget. And just a quick overview of the capital budget. Here's just a summary of our general fund and our utilities. This is the little over $5 million capital budgets. And this is just the general fund numbers, and the percent change. And then it just gives a few of the projects I tried to list under each department, from essential breathing air packs for our fire, to some of the fixed license plate reading that we're doing in the police, and in-vehicle technology, and then our portable and mobile radios for our police and fire that we need to replace. For our community programs. Community services, infrastructure is, I think about, let's see, about 57% of the total capital budget this year. 2.27% is dedicated for infrastructure. Here's some of the major road projects, the streets. There's many line items in that particular area in the capital budget, so I encourage people to take a look. And then vehicle equipment, city buildings. And just the administration returns, we'll hopefully this year move over to a voice-over-internet for our phone system. And then the library request for library roof replacement and other projects. And our utility asks. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So tonight's not the night for discussing this in detail. This is the night for the introduction of it. We will have an opportunity, and the public will have an opportunity, on April 17th, we'll have a full hearing. And as council members know, there's big binders that everyone has, that has all the details, and we can go through it line by line, page by page, if folks want. But I want to just say a couple of words about it right now. First of all, I want to give a thanks to Michael, to Marge, to the, all the department heads, who worked very, very hard to get us to what I think is the bottom-line issue for residents, zero. Zero increase in the tax rate. And I'd like to thank also the finance committee that I serve on, the mayor, the chair of the finance committee, Beth Little, and councilwoman Mary Ogden, who worked very hard with Michael, Marge, and the department heads to get us where we are. You know, it's a, I think it's a, as Michael said, it's a recognition of the fact of the changes in the federal tax law, that we took a hard look, they took a hard look, the city did, what is needed. And so, this is something that we can go out proudly to the public and share with them. And if folks have comments, we encourage them to come on April 17th, hear it, come out, talk to us, and tell us what you think of the budget. So with that, let me move on to public comments. So public comment, period, right now, is for comments on those things that are not on the agenda. So if anyone has a comment to make in the public that is for something that's not on the agenda, please raise your hand and come on up. Okay, not seeing any, we'll move on. Moving along, we are at the point in time in the agenda, for people following, to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for hearing 18-3157?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 35 Development Regulations Ordinance, Article Four, zoning, subsection 4.2-9 yard regulations, and Article Five, Design and Performance Standards, subsection 5.2-18, screening or exterior mechanical equipment.
Great. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to amend the Development Regulations Ordinance, zoning ordinance, governing the placement of new or replacement of air conditioner condensers. This is the first of several amendments to the Development Regulations Ordinance, also known as the DRO. And we are going to be undertaking a comprehensive revision of the DRO in the next year or year and a half. So this ordinance establishes a consistent five-foot side yard setback in all but the two largest zones for new or replacement air conditioner condenser units. It also requires screening of units in a side yard by fencing or vegetation. This revision addresses the inconsistencies of the setback requirements in the various zones in the DRO. This revision is based on a recommendation of the zoning board of adjustment to the planning board. The zoning board has heard a large volume of variance applications in the past few years because of inconsistencies on the setback requirements, and has recommended to the planning board that the ordinance be amended to address this inconsistency. The planning board reviewed the proposed amendment to the ordinance at its September 25, 2017 meeting, and has unanimously recommended that common council consider this language for adoption. This ordinance will help residents who are replacing air conditioner condenser units by streamlining the application and permitting process, while still protecting adjacent property owners by preserving the side yard setback requirements. I move to open the hearing for discussion.
Your second.
Second.
Any comments from members of council?
I'll take a quick one. Having been on the zoning board for a couple of years, and I got to tell you, this can really streamline the process, help those residents who are going through the process, and, you know, as it said, really encourage it, and it would assist in moving some of the process through.
Any comments from the public? Any further discussion by members of council? I will just say, as a member of sitting on the planning board who had reviewed this request from the zoning board, I agree that this is something that will help streamline, get fewer applications. And the result is, of course, that folks won't have to go in front of the zoning board, spend time, money, all of those things that they need to do when they have to go in front of the zoning board. So it achieves the purpose that it needs to do, which is streamlining it and yet protecting neighbors. With that, are there any further comments? Not hearing any. I'll consider, we've closed on the hearing for this ordinance. Moving on, finance and personnel, the second ordinance, 18-3158. Madam Clerk, would you please read it?
Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Councilwoman Fox, I mean, Councilwoman Little, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. The ordinance would allow the city to bank the difference between the total general appropriations in this year's budget and the maximum allowable appropriate, operating appropriations. This was referred to in the budget presentation by the city administrator, which he explained that these banked amounts can be used within the next two years to give the city a cushion, only in the case of really extraordinary circumstances, as he said, such as Hurricane Sandy and something that we would really need some extraordinary expense. For the purposes of the cap bank, we would also be allowed to increase the base amount of the appropriations by 3.5% instead of 2.5%. And I would ask that we move forward with this ordinance.
Second. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from the members of the public? Not hearing any. Any further discussion by members of council? Mike?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I think it is, I know city administrator Rogers mentioned this, but this is one of these ordinances that we pass every year that I think it's very appropriate to mention. It's, I don't know where the name "bank" came from that's associated with these ordinances. It's not a bank. You know, a bank is a place where you put money in. This is like a holding ledger item. If this were ever to be used, we would have to raise taxes or borrow to fund this. And I think that's important for people to realize, like, this is not something that, you know, we have, what's the number here? We'll have, we've got a million dollars sitting around to be able to spend. That's not the case. So it is an emergency thing. I think it's one of these things where I always go back and forth. It's there to possibly be used, but that's also a temptation to use it if you don't have discipline as well. But I think, you know, this council, and past councils, has shown that discipline, and it's an option in case there is a disaster, or something to be able to use. But it is important, I think, to point out that it is a misnomer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tierney. I agree. I think that, you know, people sometimes misunderstand it and think that, yes, we have the budget, and that there's some additional monies being taken in some other line item. That's not the case. This is there purely in the case of an emergency. It's something that other towns also do. It's not certainly one that we are alone in doing. It is a way of ensuring that in the dire cases that we may need, we have something there. I want to take out of order, but Reverend Haryeld, if you have a specific thing on this particular...
Response to Councilwoman Tierney's...
Could you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
His comment, words mean so much, so instead of saying "bank," could you change it to just say "contingency"?
My understanding that this is a state, it is a state statute, so I'd love it to change it, but that has to be done in Trenton.
Well, can we recommend to Trenton that they change it?
Sure. We can.
Contingency would be a better phrase.
Sure. Yes, yes. I think you're absolutely right. I think the name gives people some idea that it actually is money in a bank. Any other further comments, questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'll consider this ordinance for closed. Moving on to safety, safety 18-3159. Madam Clerk, would you please read it?
An ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Seven Administrative Policies and Procedures, to add a new section entitled 2-91, fees for rescue services provided by the fire department of the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Councilman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. We've discussed this one before. What this is, is an ordinance to allow the fire department to recoup some of their costs from going out on rescues, usually involving accidents, road accidents. So, you know, for instance, they have to use stuff to soak up all the fluid if a car is leaking fluid all over the road, to make it safe for future drivers. And this, with this ordinance, they can collect that money back, and there's set levels of the fees they can collect from the insurance companies for the cars that were involved in the collision. It's important to note that the residents will never be billed for this, and it's only the insurance companies.
Do I hear a second? Second. Comments from members of council? Councilwoman Miss Tierney?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I know this has been talked about for several years, so I applaud the fire department to dig into this, because it's complicated. You have to have a system in place to be able to follow up on this. You have to, it can take a lot of administrative effort to do this. But, you know, running a full-fledged, full-time, professional fire department's expensive. So I know that the fire department gets it, and I applaud them for this. My one thing I worry about, though, around an ordinance like this, is when you have money involved, it creates incentives. It creates incentives to do things. Most items A, B, C, D, and E are all around emergency operations, like rescue, medium rescue, heavy rescue, oxygen admin, cervical collars. These are things the fire department needs to be there, and they're there to save lives, they're there because they are first responders, they're there because it's important as far as a public safety aspect. The one thing I am concerned about is this last one, which maybe I just don't understand, technical rescue standby. It requires a technical rescue team to be onsite in a non-emergency situation. And then it goes on to list the team members. My concern is, is if we have an ordinance where we're recouping a fee for a non-emergency situation, will it create an incentive to possibly go to these things where, you know, perhaps they're better off, you know, in case there's an emergency? I don't under, like, I don't know enough about what this is, so possibly Assistant Chief Nelson might be able to speak to this, but it is one thing that it concerns me that when we create incentives that, you know, I'm concerned our fire department is here for emergencies to help people versus going to these things to supervise effectively.
And Assistant Chief Nelson, why don't you come up to the podium and let's talk about it?
Deputy Chief Nelson, Summit Fire. I'm at a little disadvantage here, because the copy I have doesn't have "F" for technical rescue on it.
Well, that was the other thing. I know it was added towards the end of the process, so...
I may not be educated enough to answer your question.
Wait a second. Then, Councilwoman...
Yeah, I spoke to Chief Evers last night about this.
Yeah, I spoke to Chief Evers last night about this, and basically, this provision is for off-duty officers who are mainly onsite with Celgene. So Celgene used to have their own crew that would do it, and now they don't have their own crew, and they have to have our firefighters there. Like, for instance, whenever they're doing construction on certain floors, they have to have a rescue team by law, ready to go in case they need something. So they use off-duty officers, and then the Summit Fire Department pays those off-duty officers, and then they recoup the money, and then they want to use this to recoup the money from Celgene for that.
All right. So I guess my understanding was if Celgene is requiring these people, have we been doing that just as part of our municipal service?
We've been doing that since, I wish I had the time dates in front of me, but we've been doing it for a little while, probably six, seven months or so, maybe 2016, for quite, it's actually been quite a while, but we were doing the training and stuff through Celgene. We just did standby recently back on February 27th, so we do do it, and we do ask for the recoup the fees that the city pays the employees to go down there.
So just to be clear, in this instance, we are going to bill Celgene's insurance company for this?
I cannot answer that question. I'm not sure how that works.
That is my understanding.
I would say it's a direct bill myself, but I don't have the facts.
That's my, that was my understanding from our last meeting at the Safety Committee, is that it goes through to their insurance company, but I'm...
That was my understanding.
I can, I don't have the facts.
Because we used to, they used to have their own, you know, fire department corps down there. Now we are providing, every time there's confined space, everything between the floors, it's, there's interstitial spaces, that when they do work there, we have to have people there.
If I may, if I can interject. Celgene's doing a lot of underground work as well. They're running new cables, fiber optics for our communication center, things like that. Anytime someone enters a confined space, there's only one way out, and it's not designed for human habit, for people to be there. You have to have a standby crew. Either Celgene coordinates with us, and we provide people for a fee, or Celgene hires a private agency. It's purely up to them. So you have to have somebody standing by.
Right, but you mentioned for a fee. So have these in the last six months have been a negotiated fee?
I'm not privy to those conversations.
I think, I believe that what Chief was saying at our last Safety Meeting was that they were using a private company out of Philadelphia that was providing this service, and that we wanted, it was just, we've been doing some of it, but wanted to do more of it, and it would be a fee with them that we would be paying, they would be paying us the fee rather than the firm in Philadelphia.
But their insurance company would pay the fee?
I'm not 100% certain whether they will or not. They'll get billed, and it would be something that, at least we have a fee structure set up through this ordinance to allow that billing to take place. Whether they pay it directly or they submit it to our insurance company, I don't know. I mean, that's going to be their...
But that's important because the...
If I could just, if I could just interject. So let's just look at the language of the ordinance, right? If we look at two point two dash ninety-one point two, the beginning of it starts off, "Fee shall be billed directly to the insurance company for the following services."
Exactly.
Right? So I don't think there's ambiguity in the language as written that who, how this should work. Every one of those things, A through F, including the technical rescue standby, is under the provision that it has to be billed directly to the insurance company. Whether the insurance company pays or doesn't pay, that's a separate issue. Whether the party that is insured decides on its own to, if the insurance company doesn't pay, to pay it anyway, that's a separate matter. But this ordinance governs this aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Fair. Any, thank you, Don.
Again, I apologize for being at a disadvantage.
That's fine.
The copy I have is not contained in that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? Consider this ordinance to be closed. Last ordinance for hearing is the law ordinance eighteen dash thirty-one sixty. Madam Clerk, would you please read it?
An ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration of the Code, Section two dash forty-three, Rent Commission, subsection two dash forty-three point three, Appointment of Members, Term and Subsection two dash forty-three point four, Election of Chairman.
Councilman McTiernan?
Thank you very much, Council President. Yeah, this ordinance restructures the rent commission somewhat, and as I mentioned at introduction, the rent commission traditionally has had a number of functions in town, one of which is to hold public meetings at regular intervals, to hear complaint cases in landlord-tenant relationships, to recommend a method for settling each dispute to both landlords and tenants, maintain a record of cases heard, and a final disposition for future precedents. It also has the power to subpoena landlords or tenants to appear in response to complaints with appropriate records, and also to recommend to the council any further action which may be appropriate, including rent leveling if necessary at some future date. This commission is not required by statute, but as you can see, it does serve some important functions. Unfortunately, over the last several years, we've had difficulty staffing the commission, partly the thought was because of its structure. So this ordinance attempts to remedy that, at least to try, by reducing the total number of commission members from seven to five, specifically reducing the landlord classification from two members to one, and the tenant unit owner from two to one as well. We'll continue to have three at-large resident members upon the committee. The quorum therefore will drop from four members to three, and it is our hope that with this more streamlined commission that it can do the important duties that it is created to do. And with that, I introduce this ordinance for hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? I will say, as a former council liaison to the rent commission, last year, it is indeed the case that it was almost impossible for us to meet because we were not able to get a quorum together and to have people who fit into the classifications. We had people who were interested as members of the public but who may not have been tenants or who may not be landlords. It is, as Councilman McTiernan said, a mission that we have created that has an important role in town, especially given the fact that we have a fair number of rental units, and people do have issues there. And we want to have a place where people can go to, where they can have their issues discussed and talked about as a way of kind of mediating between landlord and tenant. So we hope that these changes will have a beneficial impact, and for the folks who are listening out there, please apply, please apply to be members of the rent commission, and let's see if we can get it fully staffed this year. Councilman Gould?
Yes, especially if you're a landlord or a tenant, please apply.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Comments from members of the public? Seeing none, any further discussion by members of council?
I don't know the answer to this, but maybe our esteemed council would, if your 24-year-old child is renting your basement from you, couldn't you apply as a landlord?
Can he file a complaint?
Right, right.
Only if it's illegal to family.
Yes, we're not doing parental disputes here. That's not what this intent is. All right, we'll consider that hearing, for that ordinance, closed. Moving on for ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance eighteen dash thirty-one fifty-seven?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Thirty-five Development Regulations Ordinance, Article Four Zoning, Subsection four point two dash nine Yard Regulations, and Article Five Design and Performance Standards, Subsection five point two dash eighteen, Screening of Exterior Mechanical Equipment.
Councilwoman Fox?
Thank you, Council President. We just had a hearing on the zoning ordinance governing the replacement of air conditioner and condenser units in the DRO. I would like to move this ordinance for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Passes. Next, finance and personnel, eighteen dash thirty-one fifty-eight.
Ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Seven Administrative Policies and Procedures, to add a new section entitled two dash nine one, Fees for Rescue Services Provided by the Fire Department of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit, 1996.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to do a roll call on this.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Moving on, safety, eighteen dash thirty-one fifty-nine. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Seven Administrative Policies and Procedures, to add a new section entitled two dash nine one, Fees for Rescue Services Provided by the Fire Department of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit, 1996.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to do a roll call on this.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Nay.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, passes. Law, eighteen dash thirty-one sixty.
An ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration of the Code, Section two dash forty-three, Rent Commission, Subsection two dash forty-three point three, Appointment of Members and Term and Subsection two dash forty-three point four, Election of Chairman.
Councilman McTiernan, please.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in the hearing, I'd like to introduce this ordinance for final consideration.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, passes. Moving on, we're now on to resolutions. First up is finance and personnel. Councilwoman Little?
Thank you, Council President. The first finance resolution is number five five eight eight, and it's a resolution to introduce the 2018 Municipal Parking and Sewer Operating Budgets and to establish a hearing date of April 17th of this year, as we, as the city administrator gave the overview tonight. So I ask that we move forward with this resolution.
Second. Okay, this requires a roll call.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, resolution number two. Councilwoman Little?
Resolution number two, finance resolution number two is number five five eight six, to introduce the 2018 Special Improvement District Budget and establish a hearing date. This resolution introduces the budget for SDI. I think it's important that a large part of the budget comes from the special improvement district assessments of the local businesses and from vendor fees from the farmer's market, and I ask that we move forward with this resolution.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay. Number three, Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President. Finance resolution number five four six zero is certification of compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records and employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And this is to certify that the city is in fact in compliance with those regulations, and we have reviewed those with our city solicitor. I ask that we move forward with this resolution.
Second, any comments from members of council? Councilman McTiernan?
I just gave a lesson in my high school history class on the Civil Rights Act of 1964, so it's a great, a great act, and I support this resolution.
Good job, Summit.
Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Moving on, number four, please.
Number four is finance resolution number five six four three, and this is to authorize emergency temporary appropriations to the operating budget. This is for appropriations for the dispatch services, and that is being done because we are paying the first portion of that contribution to dispatch services. I'd also like to note that Executive Director Scott Ruff is here if you talk about the joint dispatch services.
Any comments from members of council?
Well, since Mr. Ruff is here, maybe we could just explain the joint dispatch, what it exactly does, and what the need is for the temporary authorization.
Mr. President, Council Scott Ruff, Executive Director of the Shared Dispatch Services, also going Malvali Emergency Communications. So the request is, it's really a timing issue, and I think Administrator Rogers will attest that every time we have a management board meeting and the budget comes up, I always put these preconditions, at some point with the timing of contracts and different things, we're always going to run very close to our budget pending quarterly payments from the municipalities, and we've reached that point this year. So in anticipation of that, I have asked the three municipalities administrators to review the needs and if they can move forward the second quarter payment from May until April, as we'll become short of funds later in April to do so. So that's a request for this, and this is a challenge I have every year in managing the budget. And again, I talk to the management board all the time, and Councilwoman Ogden, that you're representative there, and Mr. Rogers, and the chiefs, and things like that is, so it's, we've arrived at that point. So to help mitigate this in the future, what my plan was in talking to some of the board members is, I have to go, I'm going to go back to all our vendors and try to renegotiate the timing on the contracts, because most of our stuff for the year hits in the first quarter. But because of the way, I don't, the municipal budgets are funded, I think it's like twenty-six point something percent, I fell into that, and we don't carry a large fund balance, and under statute for a joint meeting, I can't have, I can't carry large reserves or equipment reserves, and we have to zero out every three years or two years. So this is, this is in essence what has occurred. And also with the formation of the organization, it wasn't front-funded like typical, so we didn't, we didn't start paying into it prior to operation, so there's not that fund, large fund balances moving forward. So that's really, it's more timing, we can tweak it a little bit, but again, this is really, it's not really an emergency, like we ran out of money or the budget was short and we need more, it's just a timing issue.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ruff from members of council? Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. So later in the year, you don't have as many expenses as early in the year, so it's not that if, you know, we pay earlier now, we're going to come up on a shortfall later this year.
Oh, no, I, no, it's strictly a timing issue, so it's not a matter of we're short, I need the money now, and then in August or September, we're going to go over budget. We still anticipated a budget surplus, it's just that surplus just isn't enough to carry us through the first quarter. But I think if I renegotiate with the vendors and spread the contracts out, maybe quarterly, if they'll accept that, we'll be able to spread it similar to the payments and payroll and things like that. So it's not, it's not an issue of, we need money, we're running short, and then we're going to need more money. It's, we still anticipate a surplus at the end of the year, again, it's strictly a timing issue on the payments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to note, and reiterate, what Executive Director Ruff said is that this would, allocation would normally be due in May, and that's why it was not included in the original temporary budget and why we're asking for this authorization at this time.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Yes. Okay, moving on, number 5, please.
This is Finance Resolution Number 5615, and this is to authorize transfer of appropriations in the operating budget. This is similar to a number of resolutions we've seen in the first quarter of the year that just transfer funds, transfer monies that are surplus in one part of the budget to area of the budget where there was a deficit. And this is to do this for the Department of Community Services. So I ask that we move forward with this resolution.
Second. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
I just want to note, this is the last one because of the timing. You're allowed to do these through the first quarter, and this is the last of these, so I would just like to note that.
Comments from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? Not seeing any, roll call.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Would you like to bundle 6, 7, and 8, please?
Thank you, Council President. The next three resolutions, Finance Resolution Number 5613, 5591, and 5590, are all to authorize execution of annual license agreements for uses of sidewalks. Number 5613 is for select residents, which is also known as wind berries. 5591 is for the office, and 5590 is for peatinos, and I ask that we move forward with these resolutions.
Second. Comments from members of council? Mr. Gould?
I'd like to try to find a way to get all of the restaurants to do this.
Any comments, oh, from members of the public?
Henry Bassman, 18 Hartley Road. I came here for another purpose, but I'm glad I got here for this. Quite frequently last year, when I'd walk down Union Place or Springfield Avenue, the space that was left between the tree perimeters and the fencing for the sidewalk wasn't really sufficient even for somebody to put a stroller through, and I've seen people with strollers struggling. I don't know who would be the appropriate person to do this. I believe, I was told that they have to leave 36 inches of open sidewalk, but I think somebody needs to check that every once in a while, just to make sure that people are complying and having a pleasant place for people to walk down our sidewalks.
Thank you. Paul, do you want to come on now?
Thank you, Council President. So each year, folks do receive their license to put out their outdoor dining, and at times they do encroach into that 36-inch or 3-foot ADA requirement. We do have property maintenance folks that we do send out on a regular basis to monitor those. So we'll continue to do it this year and make sure that people are complying.
Can I just say, in conversation with SDI, we've also talked with them, Henry, to be more, have more conversations with their restaurant owners to just, there is sidewalk creep, right? We've all seen it. So just come on, back it up a little bit, and so Nancy Adams, the Executive Director of SDI, is aware of it, and last year was putting a little bit more pressure along with all the guys at DCS who are also on top of it.
Thank you, Council President. Is this something that could be included in, I know we have that app, See Click Fix. If, say, a resident such as Mr. Bassman
Sure.
could see if someone was encroaching?
Right.
It's something that you can send into the city and say, you know, can you take a look at this?
Sure. That's a great opportunity for folks to use our See Click Fix, and typically something of that nature usually gets addressed very quickly because it is a property maintenance issue.
And it can be done anonymously as well?
It could, yes, it can.
So if Mr. Bassman wants to eat there at any future point, he'd be okay.
And typically, it's not done on purpose, it's, you know, staffing.
Right.
There's no markings in the sidewalks where they can, you know, they, and they'll bring out their tables and encroach without even realizing it. So we encourage folks, if they do see it, to call us, because we want to maintain that 3-foot ADA access to the sidewalks.
Any other problem, public, any other public comments? Further discussion by members of council? I will say that, you know, obviously, we all like the fact that during the summertime or warm season, we have this kind of nice atmosphere of being able to walk down, be able to sit down. But it is, of course, we are a town that folks have strollers, folks are in wheelchairs, folks are on crutches and things like that, and they have to be able to traverse. And I think probably it's the fact that it's creeping, or it's just the fact that you have people who are putting out tables, and they're not going to pay attention exactly where the lines are. But yes, I agree with Councilman McTiernan, if people see a problem, they should report it. This way, we can address it because it, we don't want people to be in bottlenecks and not be able to traverse down the city. But otherwise, I think, I think this is a very appropriate program. Okay, since we've bundled them, you can just go ahead and vote on all of them together. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, passes. Moving on to Buildings and Grounds, which I suspect there may be some people in the audience who are interested in the Buildings and Grounds ones. So Councilwoman Fox, the first one, please.
Thank you, Council President. Buildings and Grounds 1, Resolution 5634, is adopting an affordable housing spending plan and requesting judicial review and approval of the same. This resolution approves the amendment of the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund Spending Plan. The plan has been reviewed and approved by the Court Master assigned to Summit under the settlement agreement between the city and the Fair Share Housing Center dated October 6, 2016. This plan includes projected revenues from development fees and other sources, and a description of the anticipated uses of these funds. A final copy of the spending plan will be posted on the city's website shortly. I move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Any comments from members of council? I will say, and we'll have members of the public talking, and then we can have further discussion, but I will say, just so people put it in context, right? Affordable housing is a complicated issue. This is one component of it. To do a spending plan, it's not just the city's spending plan, but it is one that has to be approved by a special court master and that apparently, and gets judicial approval ultimately. There are other parties that are interested in what happens, nonprofits, as to how much is being spent and on what resources. This is part of an overall deliberative process that goes on around it, and that's how it should be, because there's different stakeholders and different interests involved. But it is a complicated process, and certainly it takes a lot of time and effort on all parties to get it right. With that, I'd like to, if there's no further other comments or questions by members of council, I'll open up for public comments. Any public comments?
Vito Gallo, 17 Sherwood Road Summit. Before I start, I really want to, I must say that last evening, the process that this council participated in to get citizen input for the redevelopment study was just extraordinary, and I'd be less than honest if I wasn't popping my buttons at the young lady who introduced the program. She was one of my graduate students at the Boston School, as was Phil Abramson. So to watch two of my young students advance their careers and serve this city so well was rather thrilling to me, and I'm grateful and appreciate that you've hired these folks, the well-trained folks, to do this work. The reason I'm here this evening is I've been monitoring, as many of you know, the, this affordable housing process for quite some time. I've been down to the courthouse, I've talked to the court-appointed master, I've talked to Kevin Walsh, I've talked to local city officials, and certainly to the mayor about this, and I can recall being in this room back on October 5, 2016, when the council considered a settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center, and much to the delight of a number of folks here in the audience who have been advocating for housing, and the clergy people throughout the room, this, the council unanimously approved the settlement agreement. We're now at the stage where you have to put your money where your mouth is. You've agreed to a settlement in very specific terms in the settlement, and the spending plan is saying what you're going to do to implement it. The major revenue source that you have to do this is our mandatory residential and non-residential development fees. And so this, this plan that you've, that was being amended as recently as today, reflects potential income and proposed expenditures, projected income and projected expenditures. And I must say that the contrast between the excellent presentation that your administrator made, and I know how much many of you worked on, reflected in an enormously complex process of sweating the details. The process of developing this plan is very, very different. There's been, as best I can tell, there's been very little input into this process. I mean, as recently as February 28, there was a meeting upstairs of the Affordable Housing Committee, and there was no plan. It didn't exist. What you're looking at today had yet to be prepared. And so there was, it was a work in progress, but it wasn't quite clear, it was quite clear the amount of transparency and effort that went into developing this amazing budget that you've, that you've labored on for many, many months. And this, this plan that you have before you was amended as recently as today. I doubt that any of you have had much time to study it. And what I see here is a process where you're relying upon consultants to do this. And I, quite honestly, I'll say it very plainly as I can, your consultants are letting you down because they're, you're paying them hundreds of thousands of dollars. The budget that was amended as recently as today, I guess, has a total of, I think it's 900,000-plus dollars in fees for administration, which is the, your legal fees, planning fees, the court-appointed master fees, and the like. A tremendous amount of money, and it, and it appears to me, as someone has been trying to watch this very closely, that you need to be giving this more oversight than you're giving it. It isn't clear to me, and maybe I should ask this in the form of a question, and I have several, but who on the council is responsible for working with the consultants? Do you have a committee that's working on it? Have you looked at this budget? Has anyone seen this before tonight in the form that you're going to vote on today? Can anyone answer me on that?
Why don't we do it this way, Mr. Gallo? Why don't you go through all the questions?
Oh, fine, okay. Well, let's hold that question and advance then, okay?
We're going to note it?
That's agreeable, yeah.
And we'll go through it this way.
The, the revenue side of the budget is recent, which is page 7, it's page 3 of the document, if you have this document in front of you, I think it was probably distributed to this evening, has projected revenues. As recently as February 28, three weeks ago, the bottom line was $209,000 in projected revenue, and three weeks later, it's $3,031,000. That's an extraordinary swing, and says to me that, that your consultants were not doing their due diligence and work and advising you well for all the fees you're, you're paying them, that they, in fact, not only did they not have a budget to show to the advisory committee that, that you've appointed and at least two or not three councilmen serve on, but they, they had no basis for the budget that they've submitted to you a year ago. And when you approved the original spending plan for this budget back in, I guess it would have been January of 2017, that's what you had, a $200,000 budget. That's now a $3 million budget. Something doesn't, doesn't indicate a degree of diligence in, in preparing the budget or a degree of oversight. The reason you're looking at this budget today is that the, that a judge in, in Union County Courthouse issued a conditional judgment of compliance for the approval of your, your plan and this judicial process that you're going, and gave you 90 days, that was issued by the court on September 25 of 2017, with a 90-day deadline, which happened to be Christmas Day, it's an easy way to remember the deadline. And, and that deadline, your consultants didn't produce a budget by then. And so it's been extended, and now it's been extended, if my, if my understanding is correct, to the end of this month. So you're being put in a position, and I've seen this happen several times in this process, where something's being put in front of you at the very last moment, and you're told approve it, you must approve it, there's a court-appointed deadline. And this process is repeating itself, and I don't think it's a proper process, given I know you can do much better, and you do much better on virtually everything that you do. But the ball's being dropped on this one, and I'm not criticizing the council, I'm criticizing your consultants for putting you in this position of dragging this out to the last minute, and then there's a game of brinksmanship. And I sat in this room when the planning board had to approve the Housing Amendment Fair Share Plan, and they were told, you must approve it tonight. Don't even look at it. We can amend it later. And I looked at the faces of the people on the dais, and they were insulted. They, that was, that was insulting to the people you appoint to your planning board. And in some respects, you should feel insulted, that your consultants are putting something in front of you today that you had virtually no input into, and that you're being asked to just approve because there's a deadline coming up. So there's something very wrong with this process. So that's process and governance that I think you should, should be aware of. Looking just very quickly at the budget, again, the projected revenue, most of this, you know, I think, again, given the fact that it was 209,000, it's now 3 million, I don't find much fault with this. I think, I think this is, this, at long last, is a budget that reflects the amount of money that you're likely to collect. And why is this so important? It's because you've pledged to, you've committed, and by the settlement agreement that Mayor Radis signed on October 6, 2016.
Radist.
Radist, forgive me, okay. The, I apologize. The, that, the signature that went on it, that you authorized, said that you would fund 50 units of scattered site, 100% affordable housing. And those are just words, maybe. What that means is that you're committing to work with nonprofit housing providers like Habitat for Humanity, or Our House, or a variety of groups, could be Summit Civic Foundation, mission-oriented housing developers, not this XYZ developer that's going to put a couple of apartments in there, but people whose sole mission is to house low and moderate income people. And that, the, I just want to read a few sentences from what you authorized and what you settled. This was, this is the force of a court order, and paragraph 25 says, "The city shall prepare a spending plan, which will include measures to expend trust funds, to address the 50 units contemplated in paragraph 13." And paragraph 13 had a long litany of things that you would do, and the effort you would make to actually fund 50 units of affordable housing. Now, this was an extraordinary thing that you did, and I'm very, very proud of you for having committed to doing this, because you did things that may never produce any housing. An overlay zone over a business may, in 10 years, may never produce a single unit. You've changed the zoning in the downtown and the multifamily districts to require inclusionary housing. It may never produce any housing, it may or may not. But this 50 units is tangible, and it's a commitment that you've made to say, even if nothing else we've done with our goodwill produces any housing, we will produce this modest amount of housing. 50 units, 10 years, five units a year is not exactly a heavy lift. It shouldn't be a heavy lift. And so that's why I'm watching this budget, and why I've been down to the court, and I've talked to the judge about it, and I've talked to the, I've talked to your staff on this as well, and the mayor, and indicated, you know, I was willing to help work on this. But again, you had your consultants work on this. But again, I must say, I don't believe they've served you well in this process because they're throwing something on the table today and saying you have to approve it. But be that as it may, they're, they're saying 3 million. What does 3 million mean? You have 1.8 million unexpended in the fund. You've actually collected, as of the last time I looked at this online, $4 million in the trust fund. So it's 4 million plus another 3 million. That's 7 million, and there are actually two years in there, I don't want to get too lost, losing on the weeds, but you've collected another 200,000 each of the two years in between that don't show on the sheet, on the sheet. So a substantial amount of money has been collected, maybe 7.5 million dollars. So it warrants your attention.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gallo.
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry to interrupt, and...
The, the City of Summit...
Just so I'm clear with the numbers.
Sure.
You're saying that we have collected already?
4 million plus.
4 million dollars.
Yeah. As of 2015, you collected 4 million, and you collected another 200,000 each year of 2016 and 17. So probably about 4.5 million went in the fund. Unexpended, unexpended is, and...
I'm just sort of interrupted.
Sure, of course.
Just so I'm clear, when you say we've collected, does that mean that it's collected and part of it has already been spent?
That's correct.
Right. Okay. So $4 million may have been collected, but that doesn't mean there's $4 million in the bank account?
No, the remaining balance is about $1.8 million.
Which is the number that's reflected in this--
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying that there's been a lot of money that has been collected over time, and it's been spent. Some of it has been controversial. For example, I know Reverend Harry Old has been critical of the city in the past, sending money to Elizabeth, not to build affordable housing here, but the so-called Regional Contribution Agreement. But that's water over the dam or under the bridge. But then you've put money into the Habitat project. But roughly $2 million has been spent--
Okay.
--to advance things. So I'm just pointing out--
The $1.8 million approximately that's here--
Right. And then a projection on page three of another, now, $3 million additional dollars.
Which is projected to be--
Which is projected going forward--
Forward from '20--
This year, yeah.
Just so we're all clear, so we're not talking--
And in truth, you've collected another $400,000 that doesn't show on this page, because the plan that you're approving actually goes back to the time you petitioned the court. You petitioned the court on July 1st, 2015.
Got it.
So this is kind of a moving target, and it may be a little hard. Your administrator did a better job of presenting a budget than I did. I don't have PowerPoint to do it. But the point that I'm making is there's a substantial amount of money here. And the reason it's of interest, as I read, is you've committed the city to appropriating this money, expending this money, to do 50 units of affordable housing. And so in that paragraph I started, which said the trust fund will address 50 units contemplated, it goes on to say, "Upon approval of the court," which is what you're requesting by virtue of this resolution, "the city and the Fair Share Center agree that the expenditures of the funds contemplated in the spending plan shall constitute the commitment," and the word "commitment" is highlighted in this document, "for expenditures pursuant to the statutes that provide it." So this is important, because again, it's putting your money where you made the commitment. If you go to page seven of the document, again, there are two documents. Let me see if I can get the one you did today. And this is what I really want to call your attention to. If you go to page seven, this is what you propose to do with the money. Given that you've told the court that you're going to fund 50 units of scattered site affordable housing, there's only one line under new construction on this budget on page seven, and it's under new construction Habitat for Humanity, and it's $1.2 million if you go across the line. So despite the fact that you've been working on this since you agreed to do it on October 2016, and you agreed to do it again when the council adopted a plan last January, and then the court ordered you to do it in September of last year, you still haven't put, this budget doesn't put sufficient funds to do those 50 units of affordable housing. In fact, it very clearly indicates you're only appropriating money for 12 units. So the 38 additional units that you committed to in the housing element and the fair share plan, and in the settlement agreement to do, and yet your consultants are asking you to approve this filing before the court, and you're under a conditional approval. The conditional approval of last September says that your whole approval can be rejected if you don't have a plan that's acceptable to the court-appointed master and the judge. So this is my primary concern. But then I look at where you are putting the money. So you've got this $4 million now, $3.943, if you look at that page seven, $4 million additional dollars coming in. And you're putting it in places that don't produce those 50 units. You've got $1.3 million in a rehabilitation program. And when I was at the hearing last February 28th upstairs, we were told that the housing authority had produced a rehabilitation program manual that I'm not sure anyone on this council has seen, or anyone on the advisory committees has seen. But what I think I understand, and I urge you to look into this, and do your due diligence, is do you really need to provide $1.3 million, particularly if it's all going to go to the housing authority? Now, the housing authority is dear to my heart, and there's nothing I'd like to see more than the maintenance of the 195 units that I worked on for the better part of 30 years. So don't misunderstand me that I don't want to see it maintained. But I'm not sure that's the intent of what you, or where you should put your emphasis. If you've made a commitment to do 50 units of affordable housing, then I think you ought to look at that. The other thing I would say, as someone who did budgets for the housing authority for many years, is the housing authority has reserves. Any prudent landlord does. They may have $1 or $2 million, I'm just guessing, or a magnitude. Certainly, when I retired, I left that kind of money in the reserves. And so they have money. And also, the council approved a Rattis agreement, some of you may remember that, last year, that allowed them to borrow another $1.2 million for the purpose of renovating their buildings. So the question in my mind, again, with no criticism of the housing authority, I think they're doing a terrific job. They are your vehicle to assist you in meeting these needs. But I think you should engage with them to find out if they can contribute money, rather than you're giving them money to do this. I prided myself, when I was the director, of never bringing a rice bowl to the council, asking you to put a roof on the building. I wanted to make sure I had the reserves. But it looks like the money's flowing the other way, and it's at the expense of doing what the whole intent of the Mount Laurel Doctrine is, which is to produce, for the city to produce its fair share of the regional need, not the local need, for affordable housing. And I might want to make one more point for the benefit of the new people on the council. When you were across the street yesterday, looking at all that vacant land that you're going to redevelop, all that land was acquired with federal money, and it was acquired to, and the purpose, really, was to rehouse families living in slum housing on Chestnut Avenue and the like. And it was housing Summit folks. It was all about the city doing its job and taking care of needs of our residents. And all the housing that the housing authority operates is for our residents, for Summit residents. It's a resident priority. So none of this housing addresses the need that you've committed to, which is your fair share of the regional need. So that you shouldn't confuse the good work that we've all done, and I take my little share of the credit for working with the people you appointed to the Housing Authority Board over the many years I was here. But all that was before 1986. 1986 was the Fair Housing Act, not to be confused with the Federal Fair Housing Act. The New Jersey Fair Housing Act was passed, and all the housing, the 195 units that you're renovating, were all built prior to 1986. So you need to focus on and question your consultants, and do oversight on this, to make sure that you're honoring your commitment. So I guess the final question I would have is, how can you reconcile a commitment to fund 50 units that you've represented to the court with a plan that doesn't put any money in it? It only puts enough money for 12 of the 50 units, and it's a 10-year budget. So something's very wrong here. And I wonder if anyone can shed some light on how you expect the court to approve this plan. One other last point. You have, I know, but you're spending a lot of money--
Yes.
And this is a moral, a budget is a moral document.
Mr. Gallo, we know that.
Yeah, okay. But you've got the better part of $1 million in consultant fees, and you're producing 12 units. This budget puts the maximum allowable amount of money that could be spent on consultant fees, at the expense of not building housing. So this budget needs to be reworked. But how do you justify this?
Thank you, Vito.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we do this? I want Mr. Cascades to come up, since he's been involved in this. And I know it's still open for public comments, so I'll still take public comments after that. I understand that this is taking some time. However, in my opinion, this is a very important issue. And it is perfectly fine with me for us to discuss this as fully as we can tonight. We may not be able to answer people's questions completely tonight. Mr. Cascades is here, but he was not alone in doing this. As you said, we have consultants--
None of my comments reflect--
So I'm not expecting him to be able to answer all of your questions. Obviously, he's taken down notes during the process. But I do appreciate the fact that this is a huge issue. It's not a small issue, and we are very grateful that prior councils were able to get unanimously through having a fair share housing and element plan. It was done without much ranker, in fact, with none, I believe. We did it also on the planning board without ranker. There were some concerns for the public, but there was not the animosity that other towns have. And that is to our credit. And we intend, and we're discussing all of these things, to do it in such a manner. And I appreciate your comments and your questions. They're thoughtful, and they're appreciated. Mr. Cascades?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to clarify a couple points that Mr. Gallo made. And I want to start with the first--
Paul, you have to speak up, please.
That was the administrative fees. So we refer to page five. The administrative fees are normally used for professionals such as attorneys and planners. That fee is used for any work that is done to draft the housing element fair share plan. It also is used for the management of the rehabilitation program, as well as for our affirmative marketing program and our affordable assistance program. So there's several other elements that were not mentioned in that. I think councils should be very proud, and you're going to hear later on, about a status report that is required through this agreement as well, that move forward to achieve and to achieve the goal of the 50 units in the 10 years. And that is through the adoption of the three ordinances that you adopted in 2017. This plan, as Mr. Gallo had mentioned, was a document that was work in progress. We've been working on this. We did share the original spending plan, which was part of the housing element fair share plan with the subcommittee. We've been working with the court master. I'd like to clarify this for record. Back in July of 2017, the City of Summit and its professionals sent responses back to the court and the court master regarding several conditions. We didn't, whoops, I'm sorry, we didn't receive a response till October of 2017. And we worked diligently with the court master on putting together a spending plan. However, the court master felt that we were very conservative in our original numbers in the adopted plan. We went back, we reviewed, we worked with our tax office, and we developed and came up with these numbers. The court master had an opportunity today to review the spending plan that was distributed last week to the subcommittee members and to council in this agenda packet. And he felt that our non-residential development fees were somewhat conservative, and he wanted us to look at another way of developing that. I was not in agreement. I thought we had a better recipe to project non-residential development fees, but we did take the advice of our court master. He approved this plan that I am recommending to this council tonight, that I would like to see adopted. I think it's a good plan. These are only projected revenues and expenditures. We don't have a crystal ball. The revenues that we are projecting are historical, it comes from historical data from six to seven years, from 2016, on what revenues that we have taken in, on the residential. And the non-residential is based on, not a projection of what we think we may see in the commercial side going forward. But the court master wanted us to look at it a little different, and look at fees that we generated non-residential in 2007 to 2010. I think it's very important for council and the public to know, in 2010, there was a moratorium on the funding of non-residential fees. We were not able to capture those, so the numbers that we are projecting in this plan is based on what we saw in 2007 to 2010. As far as what we've committed, Mr. Gallo is correct. I think councils should be very proud. 2017, we made a funding commitment out of our trust fund that has $1.8 million in it. They committed $1.2 million to a project. There was mention of $4 million, $8 million. Another thing I think this council should be proud of, and former councils, which was not mentioned, this trust fund funded a portion of the Habitat for Humanity project on Morris Avenue, and also the Glendale project that exists today. I think that's very important for the public in this council to know. I don't know if you want me to elaborate on anything else within this spending plan--
Paul, let me try to, let me ask you, just, I think the bottom line, one of Mr. Gallo's questions, if I remember, well, two of his questions. Let's get to the bottom line questions, I think that were important. One is his observation that on page seven, there's only a reference to 12 units. And so his point is, I think, that, well, we've made a commitment for 50, but we're referring only to 12 units. There's a deficit of 38 units. How is it that we would have money to fund the 38 units?
Sure. So what I'd like to first say is, it's not a commitment, but it was a goal to reach the 50. And that's very important. That was part of the settlement agreement. It was a goal, not a commitment. So I just want to clarify that. One of the ways you can do that, and that's what's wonderful about a spending plan, is at any time, the spending plan can be amended. And that's based on the economy and the revenues that at that time you're seeing. In 2020, we're going to be required by the court to review this spending plan and look at the revenue that we've taken in since 2016, and amend the plan accordingly. To answer your question more direct, Council President, on the rehabilitation portion, Mr. Gallo had mentioned about $1.3 million that we are funding through this plan out to 10 years. He's correct. That's what the plan does say. However, there is language there that allows the city, or gives the city the opportunity, to look at this in a couple of years. And any monies that aren't spent in that area can be redirected and repointed to another area, such as funding units to achieve that goal of 50 units eventually in 10 years. One of the areas that I believe that you will see us move forward-- One of the areas that I believe that you will see us move forward giving those goals is the overlay zoning, which you passed a ordinance. So that is one of the ways that we can move forward through this spending plan to allocate money into facilitating development of the 50 units, or the goal of the 50 units.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Why don't you sit down? Let me take other public comments. Any further public comments? Reverend Harrell, please.
Dennis and Harrell, 140 Broad Street, Summit, New Jersey. Thank you, Council President, and to the mayor and the fellow members of council. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the mayor and city council and all who worked diligently together to get the Affordable Housing Agreement signed in October 2016. I guess I've been in Summit 29 years, and this was a monumental achievement through five mayors and several council presidents and several council members. However, after hearing the presentation by Mr. Gallo and Mr. Cascase, it further raises some concerns that I have, and particularly in the area of the spending plan. The master plan was wonderfully done and completed, and included in it the city's commitment to providing affordable housing. However, as great as that commitment is, there's a statement that says, "Just follow the money," and it will tell you everything. The commitment or the goal is there, but if the money is not there, nothing is built. And looking at and hearing these two gentlemen's comments and questions or what have you, it appears, and maybe this can be answered by someone, there does not appear to be any money in the spending plan beyond the Habitat building, the proposed Habitat, the 12 units. And just being a layperson, I would say that, once that is done, then you have to revisit the spending plan, and in revisiting the spending plan, you then have to engage the services of an attorney, whoever that attorney may be. Right now, Serenian Firm. So my question is, is simple, why not include in the spend, why not include in the spending plan projected or proposed funds to cover from 2021 through 2025? As was mentioned, everything is a goal, but your interest or your passion for this is reflected in the money that you propose to be spent for that. If there's no money, then you have to amend, and I'm afraid that a court master seeing no money in a spending plan, and you're saying to the court master, "After the proposed Habitat 12 units are built, we will then revisit this," and this continues to drag this out. Let me just simplify. I have tendonitis in my shoulder, and I have been going for physical therapy. My physical therapist disappointed me recently because she said, "I'm going to give you some exercises that you can do at home, and I don't want to see you anymore." And I prefer to go for physical therapy than doing the exercises at home. But she could have easily said to me, "Instead of you coming twice a week, you can come twice a month." I would still be seeing her. I guess the point that I'm making is, and the question for Mayor Rades and city council and city administrator and the director of community services, is when is the city going to tell the law firm that we want to take control of our destiny? We want you to put together a spending plan because of the agreement, the Affordable Housing Agreement is signed, sealed, and delivered. It's in place. It's beautiful. The spending plan is the issue. We want you to put together a spending plan that is doable, that is fair, that represents our intentions to accomplish what we said in the Fair Share Housing Agreement, and we want to then be able to thank you for the services that you have provided over the years, and should we need you again, we would reach out to you. But this process of amending, coming back, amending, coming back, means that this could go on infinitum. And, you know, I asked at the Affordable Housing Committee meeting, will this be finalized in our lifetime, or will we continue to have these type of questions going back and forth? The only thing that's finalized now, and it's great, and I mentioned that earlier, it brought joy to me and to many other citizens, the leadership of the mayor and the council to put into place an a final agreement. But now the spending plan is the issue. So my question is, ask Mr. Jezinak, I think his name is, ask Serenian, the law firm, whoever's there, when do they wash their hands of this math? The money that we are spending as a city to them, and although it's in the budget, it's administrative fees, could be used in creatively helping to develop and build affordable housing. There's no such thing as that because we don't have any land, there's no. There are creative ways of developing and looking for ways to, and affordable housing is not going to, Summit is not going to be made up of affordable housing in the majority. We're still having market rate housing built, and affordable housing should be a component of that, and that's what the agreement said. So my concern is, my concern really is that the spending plan that is submitted should include money beyond the 12 units that are being built.
I understand.
If there's no money there, that means that you're not able to build it, and no matter how great the plan is that you've signed up on. So I hope that that would be the, one of the concerns that the council has, the mayor has in the council, because to me, the attorneys are managing this process, and we should be, by now, we should be able to control our own destiny.
Thank you, Reverend Harrell. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Paul, can you just come up for just one second, and let's just walk through the two questions that the reverend raised? Am I correct in my understanding that we need to pass this spending plan in order that it's the final step in the judicial process that we have? And so at that point in time, to the reverend's question about when the attorneys kind of walk out of the picture, we need to do this in order to try to get them out of the picture? Yes?
That's correct.
Okay. The second part of his, second question that he raised is the issue of, why don't we show spending on housing, affordable housing past 2020?
We have a, we have a good view of proposed and projected projects that are coming forward, and I don't want to publicly mention those projects right now. We will be capturing units, and we're on our way to meeting our goal of 50. So, and that would be not even through funding of this spending plan.
Counsel, we live--
So I just, I want to make sure I understand. So through the overlay zones, if a developer comes in and develops property and includes affordable units in the development of that property, that goes towards the 50?
Yes, it does.
And that would be a way that the goal of 50 could be met without the city directly paying for the units? Is that correct?
That's correct, counsel. And we do have a board approval right now where we're going to capture quite a few units.
Any other questions with Paul? And we'll let him sit down if, okay. Paul, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could the public raise another question?
A quick one, Reverend Harrell, because I am looking at the time. We have the rest of an agenda to go through.
My question, Paul, is simple. Why not put some money in the spending plan if you're sending to the court, master of the jury, whoever? Put some money there rather than submitting it with nothing there. There's nothing there that I see. I mean, unless I'm--
No, no. So he heard your question.
I'm saying, put something there.
So we do have, we have $1.2 million right now.
No, but that's only through the Habitat bill. I'm talking about going beyond that.
We're comfortable with the $1.2 million.
But that's opposite, that's my point. You're not providing any money--
That's the disagreement we're having--
So--
--with our professionals, and I have reviewed this. The court, the court master has approved it.
Right, okay.
He offered to work for free. Someone make a note of that.
Are there further comments from members of council? Counselman McTiernan?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's great that we have a lot of members from the community come out because it just shows that there, Summit's been passionate about affordable housing for many, 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 many years, certainly a lot longer than I've been in town, and I think everyone in Summit can be very, very proud of this, this legacy and this tradition. And I also think, as was mentioned, recent councils have done yeoman's work in pushing this forward, and as Council President Naidoo mentioned, in a very collaborative, transparent, and sincere way that I think is a credit to not just the council, but the entire community. And I think that's even more impressive because of these, as Mr. Gallo and Paul and everyone's alluded to, this is a complicated, big, nasty process. It's a mess because of the way that it's done. You know, only someone from outer space would figure out this is a way to do your affordable housing. Getting sued, having to go and negotiate this, no one in government can do it, so they drop the ball, they kick it to the courts. I personally would love that we didn't spend all this money on administrative fees. It's a complete waste. None of it goes to where it should go to. But that is the process that we live in. The plaintiff in this case has tried to reopen this case with the city a couple of times since we agreed. It doesn't serve anybody's purpose. It just, unless you're a lawyer. Unless you're a lawyer and you want to spend more money that doesn't go to affordable housing. And so I share Reverend Harrell's wish and desire that these people would be removed from this process. It's never going to happen. The process we live in stinks. It's completely screwed up, and we are trying to do the best that we can to navigate this process. My one view around this, I certainly appreciate everyone's passion about where the money goes and stuff, but this is a plan, and I'd love to say that there was a project out there that I knew of that we, that was asking for money in 2021 or 2020, but there's not, not that I'm aware of. I haven't heard anybody propose anything that's saying that they need an extra marginal dollar to make a project feasible. If that were to happen, I am certain that this council or future councils would look at figuring out a way to possibly make that happen. But as Paul mentioned, we don't have a crystal ball. The one thing I can guarantee about this plan, none of these numbers are going to be right. We have no idea how much residential construction is done, how much non-residential development gets done. It's a great guide, and the best thing you can do when making projections is to go versus the past, but to put big, chunky spending numbers on a plan when nobody has approached us, in my view, doesn't make a lot of sense. So I, I'm certainly sympathetic to it. I think the, what we can think of is, about a plan, is to look at past behavior and say, "Are you confident that the people who manage this process have the best interest of achieving this goal of 50 units?" And it is a goal. We don't have a commitment to make 50 units. We have a commitment to do our best to promote it. And the question is, is if things change, someone does come with a plan, do we believe that we will do our best efforts to support it? And I fully, firmly believe that we will. And so I'm, you know, as far as, like, I don't have a crystal ball either. It is a plan, but I do have strong confidence in the willingness of this community to back these types of projects and do everything in their power to achieve the goal, and that's what, why I'm happy that we'll, hopefully, this will be approved. We can close this messy chapter in this process and get along with promoting affordable housing.
Thank you, Counselman McTiernan. We're not going to take any more public comments, no more public comments. Let me just say, before I turn over to the mayor, Councilman McTiernan has to be commended for the fact that he was council president during the process dealing with affordable housing. And you did an excellent job, Mike, in getting us through it. So commendations.
Well, you just took my thunder. I just want to say, if you generally remember, in January of 2016, you came into my office and we talked about this, and your big concern was, "Why are we spending money in a lawsuit?" And I said to you, "This is not where we want to go." And I asked you to trust me and to just be patient and be assured. I felt confident, only having been on council weeks, I just knew that this group of people were going to do the right thing. And frankly, under Councilman McTiernan's leadership, we did. So again, it's a plan, and I'm just going to reiterate, I'm not going to go on and on, but we want to do the right thing, and I absolutely believe we will, not just the people sitting on the stairs, but the people who work in this building. So I won't go on.
And my one last comment is, I would like to, I know Paul's been thanked. He works really, he's worked incredibly hard on making this happen, and sometimes our professionals aren't, they don't do the best job. I completely agree with what Mr. Gallo said, and Paul has to navigate that. It's not easy. But I think he does a heck of a job, and he works, and I'm, you know, I think the city's very lucky to have him, you know, managing this process.
Reverend Harrell, is it special dispensation? Very, I'm going to give you like one minute.
This is not a question. I just want to say to Councilman McTiernan, I agree with what you said. However, what I'm, what the mayor said, what everybody said, what Paula said, I agree with all of this. What I'm saying is this, there's, it is a certainty that if you submit a spending plan with no projected revenue or expenses beyond what you know you're going to do, the court master and the judge is going to reject it. You're going to then have to come back to the attorney for an amendment. Why not put something there? Okay, we don't, we don't have a crystal ball. Why not put something in each one of those columns through 2025? Let the judge review it. It looks better than having zero there. That's my point.
Thank you, Reverend.
We don't know that.
Yep. Let me just say, I think Mr. Cascades has represented to us through the podium that he has talked to Phil Caton, this court master, he has reviewed this document. So we have a sense of whether or not this document will be accepted by at least the court master, who will make the recommendation to the judge. So we do know whether or not this plan will be accepted. Let me just, let me just, I will not repeat because of the time we have, a real remainder of an agenda to go through that is pretty long still. I will say this, we do have potentially a project to get through. I think, and I would encourage folks, it's absolutely true what, what Councilman McTirren said, what Mr. Cascades said, part of the reason that we end up with having so many administrative fees, and even as I, as a lawyer, will tell you, we don't want to spend money on the lawyers and the planners and all of these people in doing this stuff. What we want to do is spend money on the housing. But what we can't do is have folks go ahead and file suits and us sit there. That's not our role as representing the city. You guys are taxpayers also. You expect us not to be doing, to be doing our diligence and our work with respect to that. We have, so if we can get the folks who are on the other side to realize that this town is not the town that's trying to not do the right thing, but it is in fact the town that's trying to do it right. And we can focus our energies on getting the first 12 units built, we can go from there. We can start moving along. And if we can do it in a process without, as I've said before, what we did before, without Ranker, it would be the benefit to the community. And I think if we all come together, work together in trying to get that, that step done, that's where our aim should be. Our aim should be to be actual construction. And that is, we have a project, let's focus on the project, let's not worry so much about a plan into, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but we do know there's a project potentially on the table, let's work together towards that. And with that, if I don't hear any other comments, oh, there's no roll call here, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, moving along. Buildings and grounds number two, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 5633, endorse amended housing element and fair share plan. This resolution endorses the amended housing element and fair share plan as adopted by the planning board on March 19th, 2018. This plan addresses the city's mount Laurel obligations as set forth in the court-approved settlement agreement between the city and Fair Share Housing Center dated October 6th, 2016. The settlement agreement identified affordable housing credits that could be applied to address the city's 36 realistic development potential prior around and unmet needs obligations. The city recently learned that 10 units owned by our house did not have deed restrictions on them and could not be counted toward the required credits identified in the settlement agreement. Accordingly, the city has deleted these 10 units from the plan. The city's plan now reflects that the city has 41 affordable housing credits to fulfill the city's 36 unit realistic development potential prior around and unmet needs obligations. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Comments from council? Comments from members of the public? Mr.?
Once again, I would point out that your consultant put 10 units or whatever that number was in the plan that never should have been in the plan. They should have realized, they had done due diligence, that they were advising the city you could claim credits for units that were never deed restricted. So I, this reiterates my point, you need to pay more attention, that would be my request, that you pay more attention to what your consultant's doing, not just accept it blindly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further comments from members of the public? Any discussion by members of council? I will say, this has been an issue that was raised in the planning board. Our house had, it doesn't mean that the units are suddenly becoming market rate, it's not. They're, they're still remaining as affordable housing units. It's just that they weren't deed restricted, they shouldn't have been counted towards the city's numbers. And this was something that was discussed between the house, our house and the city to see if there was a way of resolving it. Wasn't. Planning board discussed it, we've ended up where we are. Any, Mike?
Yeah, no, I think this is just a, this one little resolution kind of shows why the public is so confused about all this, right? These units are affordable housing units.
Yes.
But they're counted to some regional number, local number. This is all mumbo jumbo to people when, when, when people start talking about it. They're affordable housing units, but we have to go through all this rigmarole with lawyers and everything because of the process, and it drives me nuts.
Any further comments, questions?
Sorry. I just have a question then. So these are 10 units that are affordable, that don't count towards the 50 that we've built?
No, not 50. Forty-six that we...
No, totally different.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So these are, our house is a nonprofit. It had 10 units, or has still 10 units, but they're not deed restricted. But our house uses them as affordable housing units. So nothing has changed as far as practically on the ground. As Mike just said, it can drive people insane because it's like, do you get counted on this column or that column? The column that matters for people, actual human beings, is, is it an affordable housing unit or is it not? It still remains exactly what it was. Nothing changes. It just changes on the city numbering system. But for the city's 36 to meet that need, we already have 41. So we have more than the 36 we need. We were before it, whatever, 51. Now it's instead 41. Okay? Any further other comments, questions? By members of council? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? No, next. Roger, please.
Buildings and grounds number three, Resolution 5562, authorize the continuation of the Parklet program and use of public property for same. This resolution authorizes the continuation of the Parklet program for 2018. This program has operated as a pilot program since its approval in July 2016. Given positive feedback from residents and users of the Parklet, the DCP director is recommending that the program be continued in 2018. The Parklet is a seasonal temporary seating platform which is placed flush with the curb to create an extension of the sidewalk, and it replaces one or two parking spaces with a small park. The Parklet will be installed once again at 356 Springfield Avenue near Batavia Cafe and Tito's Burritos, and will be in place from April 15th to November 15th. It will be maintained by these businesses, but it's open for use of, by any member of the public. So you don't have to purchase food at those establishments in order to use the Parklet. The only cost to the city for this project would be for plants to be installed in the barrier planters, and though that cost would be drawn from established accounts for downtown maintenance and landscaping. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from members of the public? I mean, sorry, comments from members of council? Matt?
I just was very pleased with the Parklet. I thought it worked really well, looks really nice. I see a lot of residents using it. I think it's a terrific program.
In addition to the residents, I think the shop owners down in SDI all agree that it's a great program for attracting people that, to come down to town and spend some time knowing about.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've talked about this in Buildings and Grounds and trying to figure out maybe other places that this might be appropriate, because it is a nice amenity. And one thing, just thinking about it, is this would also, you know, rather than just think about it in the traditional downtown, there are other areas of downtown, East Summit, down near Morris Avenue, I don't know, but, but we should think a little bigger because it's a nice amenity.
I think that's a very, very right thing to do. Comments from members of the public? My, any other further discussion, members of council? My only observation is, I think initially when the, when the, when the program started, people were very concerned about it. But as we can see, as it's developed and people have seen the benefit of it, people have seen, okay, this makes sense for our downtown. And I commend the prior councils for having introduced it. And now, and now we are at the point where I think, as, as Councilman McTirren said, start thinking outside of, okay, just where we are, let's think broader, more broadly.
It has done what it's meant to do, it has increased foot travel.
Perfect. That's what we wanted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Works. Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Works number one, Resolution 5553, is to authorize the execution agreement with Sunrise Development Inc. for contributions toward the sanitary sewer improvement project, manhole lid replacement. As we know, Summit is, or Sunrise is developing a property at the intersection of Morris Avenue and River Road. This development will be placing additional workload on our sewer system. Sunrise is agreeing to pay for an upgrade of 37 manhole lids, which will reduce the infiltration and inflows, I and I in that jargon, into the sewer system and divert water. These new lids will divert the groundwater into the stormwater rather than going into the sewer. Summit worked with Sunrise, the joint meeting on the calculation on the additional inflows from which the new development, or for the new development, and then identified manhole covers which need to be replaced and to match the I and I inflows. While the cost has not been finalized, it is anticipated paid to be around $10,000. Sunrise will be covering all these costs. This is a common practice when developing, connecting large properties to the existing sewer system. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Thank you. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Further discussion, members of council? Matt?
Did they just volunteer to do this, or did we have to twist their arm?
It was part of the agreement. They, they didn't take much twisting. It was, it's, as I said, it's part of the standard commercial property that they anticipated.
Great. I will note that I think one of the things that folks don't focus on, but is a major issue of infrastructure, is the sewer system and the age of the sewer system and so forth. There is, of course, a regular inspection program, but one of the things we've been talking about with the, with the chair of the works program is a more comprehensive look at the sewer infrastructure, because as we look down the road and think about how much funding we will need for sewer infrastructure, we need to start thinking about what is it that we need to deal with? What's the, what's the problem and how, how much is it going to cost? With that, a smile from the chair, get the smile from the chair of the Works Committee going, yeah, okay, yeah, look into it. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Next, Steve.
Okay, Resolution number two for Works. Resolution 5582 is authorizing an online auction of unneeded city equipment and vehicles. Summit maintains equipment and vehicles, once they become obsolete, Summit replaces them. Many vendors do not take trade-ins, so what many municipalities will do is auction them off. We're authorizing the use of the online auction program, govdeal.com. Currently, we have four vehicles ready for auction, the public can inspect them April 3rd and 5th, and then the auction will play, take place April 12th. The basics are, Summit establishes a minimum acceptance amount, the service takes a 7.5% program fee, equipment is sold as is, and the buyer is responsible for the picking up of the vehicle. There may be additional vehicles as the year goes on. So I move we accept, we accept this resolution. And oh, by the way, we've used them in prior years.
Second.
Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
Third, Steve. Okay, third one. Resolution 5566 is to award a bid, Tanglewood, Dorchester and Winchester avenues, improvement project for $445,740. You guys know that those roads are in horrible shape. The low qualifying bidder was received from AJM Contractors out of Clifton. These roads, as I said, are in bad shape, and these recent weather hasn't helped anything. The project will be to prepare the site, clean debris, mill the roads, asphalt along the roads, repair curbing, manholes, basically making the roads more comfortable to drive. This capital project was previous, was approved during the 2017 capital plan. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Comments from members of council? Council, comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Next.
I should have gone first, we're going through these things. Resolution 5556 is to authorize a Somerset County Cooperative purchasing system for purchase of landscaping treatment and fertilizing services not to exceed $80,000. Summit contracts these services to maintain our natural, natural turf fields and public areas, which includes split seating, core aeration, top dressing, grub control and basic fertilization, all the things that make our lawns look nice and green. Through the co-op, Summit vendors would be True Green out of South Plainfield and Lawn Connection out of West Berlin. I move, we accept these resolutions?
Second.
Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Oh, Matt?
Sorry. Are we, are the vendors, you know, making sure not to use harmful chemicals on the lawns?
The process is, Paul, do you want me to answer this, or do you want? Basically, we make sure that when the chemicals are applied, the fields will be cordoned off and properly drained, or dried so prior to anyone using, utilizing the field.
I, I mean, could we explore in future using alternative methods then that don't need the chemicals?
For you, Council President. So the materials that we are using, Councilman, are organic materials, and we're just required to flag these locations until the material dries. So they're not harmful chemicals. That has been something that, it's been a practice probably for the last 10 years that we used more organic type material down on our natural turf fields.
Oh, that's excellent. One thing I heard a lot on the campaign trail was residents worried about their, believe it or not, dogs and children on the fields.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion, members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Okay. Number five, Resolution 5621 is authorize submission of a grant application to Union County for a 2018 infrastructure and municipality aid grant. This aid grant application is looking for assistance of $400,000 for the Springfield Avenue project. This grant application is similar to grants we had received in 2015, 16 and 17. We would need to do this work this year in 2018, and the section that we have identified would be on Springfield from Morris heading, heading east, and where we would be addressing curbs, lights and pedestrian accessibility through City Hall. Union County didn't give us much time for submitting this grant as it is due April 1st. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Further, oh, oh, sorry.
I would just note that this is from Morris Avenue, basically to the, to the small bridge near Windberries, just to clarify which bridge we're talking about.
Not Morris Avenue Bridge?
Exactly.
Oh, right. Okay. I forgot you, that was a bridge, but it is, over the train tracks.
Right. In theory.
Yes, yes. Comments from members of the public? Any further discussion from members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Last words.
I've got two more.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right, you're going to change it. You're going to change it.
Okay, Resolution 5630 is authorizing submission of a grant application to New Jersey American Water Company, a 2018 environmental grant program. The objective, the objective of this is to improve, restore and or protect watersheds by awarding $10,000. And the application Summit would work with experts from Rutgers in building a rain garden along Martins Brook, which is along other Parkway. This area gets considerable attention during community cleanup days. We'd basically be building a, what we've done around here, another, the rain gardens. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Comments from members of council? I'll just say that I think this is great, that we're building another rain garden. It reduces stormwater runoff, it creates native vegetation, and to Councilman Gould's point, you have less area that needs fertilizers and pesticides, and so that's all good things. Councilwoman Fox?
If anyone's interested in seeing what a rain garden looks like, we've got, I believe, two of them outside City Hall, designed by the same group of people at Rutgers, and also one outside the library. And to catch it on a rainy day, it's, it's really great to watch, so just thought that, bring that up.
Comments from members of the public? Further discussion, members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Okay, my last one, this was, this is a good one. Resolution 5579.
All good ones, too.
We get money back, come on. This is what I've been waiting for all night. I'm sorry. Authorized, change order number... Authorized change order number one for the Springfield Improvement Project in the amount of $57,466.46. Good news. The Springfield project came in under budget. As such, we are authorizing a change order in order to keep our records in good standing. The original amount of $808,341.50, when it actually came in at 75, 750,875, resulting in the decrease, there were savings of $57,466.46. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Yes, I, I was delighted to see this in the packet when I read it. And I wonder, can you give me any more particulars about this? Like, who was the vendor? Did we have to wring it out of them, or did they voluntarily give up the money?
They were willing. Arm twisting.
It just submits the bills, and they commit, and they're lower.
Yeah.
Is that really it?
Basically, they saved some money on the asphalt. We didn't have to put as much asphalt down as we originally thought, pretty much.
It's, but I do, in a more serious way, you know, a vendor that comes in under budget, can we, you know, do we always grant the bids to the lowest bidder? Or do we sometimes?
You have to.
So it's state law that we have to?
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
No, and, and for, for those who recall, this was a pretty big project last summer, and it's, it was great. You know, we've connected pedestrian access underneath that railroad bridge on Springfield. There's been some speed reduction. Things put in near Springfield around Hobart. It's, it was a really good project, and it's neat to see that it also came in way under budget, too. So congratulations.
I, I would agree. I, it's a, it's a very good, useful project, something that people in town really needed. It accomplished a great deal. And it is very unusual to see a change order. I think, I think it's a rare day where a change order goes in this direction. Comment for, for members of the public? Further discussion, members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're up to the consent agenda. Does anybody?
No. Sorry, Council President. We have a resolution from the floor, please, from the safety, Public Safety Committee.
Oh, okay, all right, there we go. Okay. Councilman Gould?
Chief Wex advised us that, has requested that we authorize the swearing-in of Officer, pardon me.
Scarpello.
Officer Scarpello, based on the fact that he has completed all his, his recent completion of the background medical and psychological exams. This, this, this position has already been approved, and we want to get this officer up and, up and running as soon as possible. So we need to do this. I move that we authorize.
Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, now, before we move on to the consent agenda, does anybody have any changes proposed with this?
As a matter of fact, I do.
Oh, my God.
I would like to pull the Works ID number 5589. We're not ready to authorize that refund.
Okay, so that has been pulled. So now do I have a motion for approval of the consent, consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions? No, great, thank you. Now it is time for council member comments or new business.
Council President? Oh, D A R.
Oh, D A R. We just have tons of stuff tonight. D A R.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. We have an item for discussion, which is number 5641, which is a status report on affordable housing. So we've provided a copy of the city's Affordable Housing Status Report in the council packet, and it's on the city website. And this report details what the city has accomplished in 2017 and what we plan to accomplish in 2018. And this report was, was presented to the Affordable Housing Committee at its February 28th meeting.
Do I, here's a second.
I'm sorry?
Is there a second, or anything? Just this is a report?
No, you don't need a second.
Okay.
It's just a point of information.
Does anybody want to discuss it? That's it, okay, no further discussion, great. Now, council member comments, new business? I don't see.
I'll throw one out.
That's fine.